As we handle the business of Sumter County and its residents, Lord be with each and every one that's in our gallery, those that are watching, and each council member that we would make the right decision for not only today, that will serve our community for generations to come, to make Sumter the place that we can love, live, enjoy, work, and raise our families, Lord God. So we just ask that you come into our meeting. We ask a special prayer, Lord God, for our missing councilwoman, and she is with her family. Lord God, continue to bless and build her up. Lord God, give her traveling grace and mercy. As we also include our men and women of our armed forces, be with them, Lord God, because the freedoms that we enjoy is because of their sacrifices. Be with their families as they wait for their loved ones to return. Most of all, God, we ask a special blessing for our nation and each and every ruler that governs over people, that they will make the right decision for the least of these, and for all of us, that we may be able to live in peace with one another. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the best of all, with liberty and justice
I'm going to change this to the agenda. Do you have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Somebody.
Second, we have a motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda and a discussion. Here none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Agenda is approved. We have a motion to approve our minutes from our meeting held on August the 26th. It's been moved to property second that we approve our minutes from August 26th. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Lanius Mountains, ordinance amendment number 2505. Ms. Rudman. Ms. Rudman.
Sterling.
Oh, Sterling.
IT, trying to get your attention.
Helen Rudman for Planning Staff. OA 2505 is an amendment to our residential development standards in the county being brought forward by Sumter County. It is to amend Articles 1, 3, 4, 5, and 10 to revise certain Sumter County residential development standards. Yes, sir.
Hey, guys. Through. Oh, there we go.
For the audience, we're going through, we're going through, this is the second meeting with our new technology, so we've got our IT staff back here trying to work with us to make sure everything is being coordinated and recorded properly. So please bear with us. I apologize. It'll all work out in the end. Thank you.
So this text amendment is to amend our residential development standards in the county. It touches several parts of the ordinance because we are talking about some administrative stuff and some definitions as well as accessory use standards. So the purpose of this text amendment is to make changes concerning which districts certain housing types are permitted in and the required standards that have to be adhered to. It's also to make necessary changes for consistency, clarity, and ease of use, including changes to the definitions of certain housing types. The housing types that are currently in the ordinance were established in 1999, and some of them contradict themselves, so we are looking at adding clarity to what they are related to different housing types, and we'll go through those. It is also to expressly allow for additional submissions to be required for detached one and two unit housing types on individual lots. Right now, there's a complete exemption in the ordinance for any site plan review for those, but we're looking at adding a caveat into the ordinance that would allow for planning staff to request additional information when it is unclear whether what is being proposed because of the size and shape of the lot will actually fit so that we can get ahead of having to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals before something's already been built and we find out that it does not fit and it does not work. And then it is also to make changes to certain supplementary standards that really aren't practical in application, or they are written in such a way that they're almost nonsensical in the English language, so we're clarifying those and making them easy to understand. And then it's to add specific conditional use standards and submission requirements for townhouses, single-family attached duplexes, and quadruplex housing types in zoning districts where they are in fact a conditional use so that we can review those to make sure that one, the property will actually accommodate it properly, and two, to ensure that site access can be properly accommodated. Some key terms that we are changing, we are adding a clear definition for accessory apartment. It will be defined as a second dwelling unit either in or added to an existing single-family detached dwelling, or in a separate structure on the same lot as the principal single-family detached dwelling that is not a manufactured home. It is a complete independent separated living facility with provisions for stove and/or oven, a toilet, a shower or bathtub, and sleeping and living space. We're also defining a duplex. It is a single building on one parcel of land. This came up at a previous meeting about what's the difference between a duplex and single-family attached, so we're clearly defining it now in the ordinance for everybody. It is on one piece of land. It's constructed and used for two separately contained dwelling units, but they are not considered a duplex if the second unit meets the criteria of an accessory apartment. And then multifamily apartments, we're also defining that as a structure or group of structures designed for or occupied by five or more families living independent of each other in separate dwelling units within the said structures, with the number of families and residents not exceeding the number of dwelling units provided, and this is to also assume that it is all on one single tract of land. It's a rental product. And then quadruplexes are a single building on one parcel of land that are designed and constructed or reconstructed so a house could be converted and used for four separately contained dwelling units. These are also generally rental products. And then single-family attached, this is different from a duplex. It's two attached single-family dwelling units on individual lots that are joined by a single lot line but separated from one another by an unpierced wall extending from the ground to the roof. So think townhouse, but it's only two units. That's what a single-family attached product would be. Now we define townhouse. It's a series of three to eight single-family dwelling units, each with the dwelling joined to at least one other dwelling unit along a single lot line and separated from the attached dwelling in a series of unpeered common walls from the ground to roof. Generally, these are firewall structures under the building code, which is a safety measure. Then we define triplex, which is a single building on one parcel of land that's designed, constructed, or reconstructed to be used for three separate dwelling units. This is one building, three units, generally a rental product. Then we are defining building in the ordinance. It is a structure having a roof supported by columns or walls for shelter support or enclosure of persons, animals, or property. And then defining accessory buildings, so building accessory. It's a subordinate building on the same lot as the principal or main building structure or use, and is occupied or devoted to a use that's incidental to the principal use. So think storage building, garage, pool house, man cave, but not the house. And then we're going to define structure as anything constructed or erected, including canopies. Certain types of structures will have a more specific definition in Article 10B1. So this could be an open-sided carport. It doesn't have walls, so technically it's not a building. It's just, or it could be a pole barn. The fact that it doesn't have walls under our zoning ordinance, it's still considered a structure. And then an accessory structure, we've covered that. My apologies that it's in there twice. And then a floor plan is a graphic representation of the anticipated utilization of the floor area within a building or structure, typically drawn to scale and showing the dimensions and intended utilization of each room within the structure. This becomes important because sometimes we have questions about whether the building that you're building is actually an accessory apartment, or it's just an extra structure. I see Ms. Gardner-Green is laughing about this because we've had that conversation with her on a project before, but it is important that we have a way to ask for this information, and the way to ask for that is to put it in the code. And then a plot plan is for individual lots typically drawn to scale and showing the actual measurements of the lot, the location of the existing buildings on the lot, the size and location of new buildings or buildings in additions to be erected on the lot, and the location of the lot in relation to the abutting street, and other such information. These are considered to be less formal than a formal site plan, which is what you would do for a commercial project, but they would be submitted when we're trying to clarify that you have sufficient space for what you're trying to do. So it is going to be to scale. It's going to show where building locations are on the property so that we can see that, yes, you have enough room that if you want to put this particular building on this particular property, that it's going to meet setbacks in development standards. And then a site plan is more formalized than a plot plan. The site plans are generally used for commercial or multistructure projects. So it's a formal plan submission for site development activity that includes new buildings, building additions, land disturbance, grading, et cetera, that meet the minimum information data and technical standards of the ordinance. Site plans are considered minor or major depending on the characteristics of the proposed development and are subject to the process requirements outlined in the ordinance. Some major and minor site plans are actually already part of our development ordinance. We're just actually defining what a site plan is in the definitions section. This is where we're changing some texts that will allow the zoning administrator to request additional information for one and two family dwelling units when we're trying to determine that something you want to do on the property in terms of an addition, what actually fit. It does allow us, if we need to, to ask for additional information. There are lots in the community, they're very small, that are in the county, and sometimes somebody will come in and go, "I want to put a 44-foot addition on this property, but the property is only 50 feet wide." We're like, "Okay, well, show us how that 44 feet is going to go onto the property because we don't think you have enough space." And so this will actually allow us to ask for that information. So everything that you see in red would be new language, and it specifically says, "The zoning administrator may require plot plan, floor plan, or survey plat submission for individual lot applications for detached one and two dwelling unit buildings if such items are needed to fully verify compliance with the requirements of this ordinance." We generally don't ask for it if we can figure it out by looking at the maps, but we do have some very tight properties in the county where this is necessary. We are going to a tabular format in all of the residential zoning districts for the development standards, so this will be the new Exhibit 1A for uses in the R15 district. You've got the standards for nonresidential development and for single-family detached. Single-family detached dwellings will only be the only type of housing unit allowed in the R15 district. We'll do the same thing for the R9 district. The difference is the R9 district would actually allow duplex dwellings and single-family attached dwellings in addition to single-family dwellings. Just updates to the uses in the R6 district to clarify the development standards that are in that district and to add some notes in the bottom. The same thing for the general residential zoning district. We're tabularizing all of the information and getting away from having a bunch of text that duplicates information. And the same for residential multifamily. And then we also do have residential development standards in the commercial districts, so we're also updating this table as well for consistency. We will be updating the use table. You'll notice ambulance services is thrown into this text amendment. It is because we had the opportunity to make sure that we clarified this as a text amendment. Ambulance services will be added to PO and neighborhood commercial as a conditional use, and by right, in light industrial and heavy industrial and a conditional use in the AC district. This is how it was prior to us going from the SIC to the NACs code, but somehow it got dropped out, so we're going ahead and cleaning that up because we have the opportunity. Functionally, isn't changing anything with that. But then we're also dealing with the issues with the housing types, and everything that you see highlighted in yellow on this table, if it's yellow highlighted blank, that means we removed it from the table. If it's highlighted yellow with a C, we've added it as a conditional use. So you'll note in the R15 district, there used to be a conditional use per, there used to be a use of ability to do single-family attached dwellings as well as townhouse dwellings. We've pulled those out. So the R15 zoning district will only be a single-family detached dwelling district. And then in R9, we made conditional uses for attached dwellings and duplexes, and we removed townhouses. And so now townhouses will only be allowed in the general residential R6 and RMF districts as well as the commercial zoning districts. We also clarified how we measure yards. There's lots and lots of verbiage in this section. This particular section, we're removing this last sentence that you see under Item B, which required us to separate buildings by the height of the tallest adjacent structure. Building code regulates that. We shouldn't have to be regulating it. It goes through a site plan review process. It goes through an inspection process, and this actually forces property to not be used in the most economical and efficient way. So we're removing that caveat from the code. With front yard setbacks, we're actually removing this sentence B that says, "Where a lot fronts on two or more non-intersecting streets, or two intersecting streets forming at 60-degree angle or less, front yard should be provided on both streets." I don't, can't tell you how many hours we've spent over the last 20 years every time I get a new planner trying to explain that to them, so we're just going to expand it and do what it needs to do. Tell us that you've got a corner lot, this is how you do setbacks. If you've got a through lot, which means that it's got two streets, one on the front and one on the back, this is how you do setbacks. So it cleans all of the side yard language up. It makes it very clear for somebody new to look at it and understand what it means. Can't tell you the mental gymnastics we've gone through over the years trying to explain the previous sentence to people, but essentially if it's corner lot, the street that it's facing that's front on, that's a front setback. The side that's the exterior side is half of the front setback. If it's a through lot that has two street frontages parallel to each other, both of those are going to be treated as front setbacks, so it won't have a rear yard setback. And then we do clarification on the side yard language, too. Most of that red stuff that you see struck out is absolutely not essential for explaining things, and so really, the whole point is, the house can't cross the property line. And the common wall located on the zero side of a zero setback property shall be constructed in accordance with all specifications and the latest edition of the building code. So basically, if your building wall is on a firewall, or is on a property line, it has to have the firewall that building code requires. So we're adding in the conditions and exceptions to accessory structure language. We're adding the sentence here, item number four, that accessory apartments shall be treated as a permitted accessory use on parcels that's principal use as single-family detached residential, not including manufactured homes regardless of the zoning classification. So basically, if you have a piece of property that has a single-family home on it, no matter what zoning district it's in, you will be permitted to build an accessory apartment if you have square footage left for accessory structures. We have interpreted it this way, but we've run into a couple of issues where people have been going to refinance their house and it's come up because it's not in a residential district, so we want to have it clear in the code that we can point to for a lender or an underwriter that, yes, in fact, the situation that they have is legal. And then again, we're looking at adding the word building in terms of maximum height for accessory structures, so it will be a building or a structure. We're also looking at the number. We're adding that residentially-used parcels, not just residential parcels. That can be interpreted multiple ways, but we're clearly saying if it's a single-family home property or a multifamily home property, it's a residentially-used property, then these are the standards it has to abide by for accessory structures and accessory buildings. We're also putting a caveat in there that single-family attached dwellings and townhouse dwellings can only have one accessory building in accordance with the maximum size. Normally, you can have two detached accessory structures over 120 square feet and two under 120 square feet, which is a total of four buildings on a property in addition to your house. That doesn't make sense on these higher-density products. These lots are generally only 5,000 to 6,000 square feet in area. There's not room to do that. And then we're adding in the location requirements that residential accessory buildings and structures have to comply with location requirements unless addition, a different locational requirement for a specified accessory building or structure type exists in the ordinance. So basically, it's saying that detached garages can go either to the side yard or to the rear yard, but it has to be a garage in line with the house. Any other type of storage building or accessory apartment has to go in the rear yard of the structure, so you're not having people build storage buildings in their front yards. In a more rural area, if it's a unique situation, and we've done this before, we generally will go to the Board of Zoning Appeals to get a location variance. There are certainly situations in the community where it makes sense to put the bigger building in the front yard because it's 120 acres, but if they're doing it as a residential accessory structure, we do have to go to the BCA. But there are caveats and ways for people to work around those rules and get legal We're just clarifying the setbacks. We're putting it into a more tabular format. We are not going to reboot this computer right now. We're putting it into a more listing format instead of using it as words. If it will let me change, maybe it won't. It's there, okay. So we're just going to a listed format instead of having it spelled out in words. And then accessory buildings that are over 1,200 square feet in size have to have a 10-foot setback from the property lines. This is actually in alignment with what most of our single-family structure setbacks are as well. And then we're adding the word building into the maximum size of residential accessory buildings and striking the word structure, and just adding building footprint and structure information to our already established use table. And we're adding one more caveat at the bottom that explains that if you have a structure that is like a carport or, yes.
Sorry to interrupt, but we need to discuss this scale. Did you look at this?
We have not, but there will be a separate accessory structure amendment that we're going to bring up to you guys. This is really just some stuff that we can clean up right now and clarify, but yeah.
Yeah, because we discussed it. I was wondering if it's going to be in this presentation. Obviously, it's not.
There's a lot to change with residential development standards for housing specifically, and there's a lot to change with the accessory structures. We decided to not try to bite at all at the same time because it would have been 100 pages of changes.
No, no, that's fine. I appreciate it.
Yeah. So that is on the schedule of things to look at. It'll probably come later this year.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
But we are, we did add a caveat that if you have a carport that doesn't have walls, we're measuring the covered area as what the square footage is for our accessory structure. Normally, with a building that has walls, we're measuring what's enclosed, but with a building that's not enclosed, we're measuring what's covered by the roof. And so that's what item number four is saying at the bottom. And then we're cleaning up the accessory supplementary requirements to take a lot of redundant language out of here that really doesn't make a whole lot of sense. Doesn't have to do a square footage, so you'll see a lot of red in there, but it talks about off-street parking, that it can be located in all yards and all zoning districts, but it can't be located in any required buffer yard that's meant to be permanent as part of Article 8D of the ordinance, which is our landscaping standards. We'll be seeing those next month.
Thank you.
And then we're adding new language. Instead of everything that you saw on this page under accessory apartments, we're actually just putting a tabular list of, these are the things that accessory apartments have to abide by. It's essentially the same information that was previously in the ordinance, but we're taking it out of that massive, hard-to-digest paragraph, and we're putting it into a numbered So for those of you that aren't familiar with those requirements, they have the accessory building structure development standards that are established in 4G2B and Article 4. Exhibit 8A are applicable to the accessory apartment, so we're saying that you can build an accessory apartment, but it has to fit within your size limitations for accessory structures. They are prohibited on lots where a manufactured home is the principal use, simply because a manufactured home can be removed from the property, and then you end up with an accessory apartment that's not accessory to anything, and they're treated quite differently for locational requirements and other things. We are stating that you can only have one accessory apartment for property. That, this has come up multiple times. Multiple dwelling units on a property generally aren't permitted, so the accessory apartment, one of those, if you've got a single-family house, you end up with two dwelling units, but one is smaller than the existing house. It is limited to 40% of the ground area of the existing dwelling, or 1,000 square feet in area, whichever is less. And so you don't actually have a size minimum, you just have a 40% cap based on what the size of the house is. You do have to provide one off-street parking space for the accessory apartment. It cannot have more than two bedrooms, and we will require submission of a floor plan and plot plan so that we can evaluate to make sure that it complies with the standards based on the house and the property.
Ms. Rudman, is there a reason why the apartments can have no more than two bedrooms?
That's been in the code since it was originally written. I don't remember the rationale for only having two, other than it's meant to be a smaller accessory structure to the principal dwelling unit.
Are you talking an accessory apartment or just an apartment?
Accessory.
I don't know. I don't care if that's three bedrooms personally.
Yeah. Honestly, it was just carried over from the previous, the way it was written.
Let's just make a note, if someone comes to council with an issue like that, we should probably be amenable to working with them.
Yeah. There's no, there's no, there's no reason that we can't strike that before second reading.
It's already prohibited by the size, so I would say just strike it.
Yeah.
Size is going to dictate that.
Size will dictate the whole thing, so it doesn't matter. If that's okay with councils, strike that.
Okay. Happy to do that. Where was I at? My apologies. With the stockyards and slaughterhouses and commercial poultry houses and kennels, we're not really sure why it was listed in there the way it was, but we're going ahead and doing the same thing, making it also a numbered list that's clearer to understand. All of these uses are special exceptions in the code, and they always have been. And then we're just making it clear that swimming pools, tennis courts, and recreational uses should be located in the side or rear yards only and at least 10 feet from property lines, and shouldn't be located in any required buffer yards that are required under Article 8D, which is landscaping standards, and that any lighting should be shielded away from any adjacent residences. And then the same thing with satellite dishes. We're taking it from that very big paragraph that's hard to digest and just putting it in a bulleted list. Basically, it says, "You can't put them in your front yard." We don't have many satellite dishes in the community anymore. That's kind of a vestige of pre-internet era, but there are a couple of people that still have Dish Network out in the hinterlands, but we do have ham radio operators and people that also have TV antennas on their properties. So this is just to state that those need to be either beside or behind your house and not in your front yard. And then we're just adding some language for commercial accessory buildings, just to clarify that it's commercial accessory buildings and structures. We already require them to be shown on a site plan and that they have to meet principal setbacks, so this is just a matter of adding clarifying language. And then we're also adding the caveat that if you're doing a 200-square-foot exempt accessory structure, that you're still, you're limited to two of those, so that we don't end up with commercial projects that have a series of 200-square-foot storage buildings in the backyard of the building so that they can get around having to go through a site plan review process. And then we're just adding the word building into agriculture accessory buildings and structures because we've gone to that step to define the difference between a building and structure. Now we add conditional use review criteria. Thank you all for bearing with me. This is a very long text amendment. Essentially, this is laying out the conditional use review criteria for a townhouse that will be put in Article 5. These are the things that we will be reviewing when somebody submits a conditional use application for a townhouse project. They would have to, they would be required to submit an application to us showing how the building's going to fit on the property, how they're going to address parking, how it's going to be placed, so that we're not creating any issues. This is a much bigger problem in a more urban environment. There are very few places in the county itself where this can happen because these products generally depend on the availability of sewer service, but we do have a couple of places where it could be a possibility in the future. So we just want to make sure that we're not creating a parking problem for ourselves that are, any of you that have been in Hunter's Crossing have probably seen, building placement for townhouses and how the parking is laid out when each one has its own driveway and garage can create a huge issue, so this is to try and help combat that. We're also, with the single-family attached dwelling for the conditional use review process, we're just asking for a submission of a floor plan and a plot plan just to make sure that the building can fit on the property the way that they're saying that they're going to build it. And the same thing with duplex dwelling units when there is a conditional use. If it's a by-right use and there is a district where duplexes are by right, as long as the property meets the development standards, we don't have to do that site plan review to make sure that it fits. So in the GR district, duplexes are by right, in the R6 district, they're by right, so we don't have to do a site plan review. They just pull the building permit. They know what They know what they have to work in, but when we're doing conditional use review, there is a higher level of review standard. With triplexes and quadruplex dwellings, more often than not, this is somebody taking an older, bigger house and converting it into three or four units. So we want to make sure that they're not putting more than two driveways in so that we're not ending up with a series of parking spaces in front of the building on the street where it just doesn't make sense to do that. They should really put their parking and access behind the building, especially in the more urban parts of the county so that we're not having a series of cars that are parked very close to the road that don't really need to be right in front of the house. Planning Commission did recommend approval of this. It will make necessary consistency and clarification and ease-of-use changes to support early development. And it clearly establishes that the R15 zoning district is intended for single-family detached dwellings only. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I've got one. You didn't bring up this, and I just read about it not too long ago. Many homes, little, small homes.
We, we do-
Is that considered a single-family?
Right now, under our ordinance, we would consider a tiny house a single-family structure. So by zoning, we would allow that to be built on any residential lot. If we were looking at a true tiny house amendment, we would have to look at what slot sizes we were wanting to have happen.
So if you came out in the county, it's, it's AC. You're telling me you've got to have a one-acre lot to put one of those little mini homes on?
Yes, sir, I am.
Currently.
Currently.
Because that is an affordable way, especially for seniors to afford a home.
It, it is. With tiny homes, there's a whole, there's a whole set of building code that goes with that. So it's been adopted by the state.
Have we got any in something, or we got something coming?
Got one in my district.
We, we, we have, we have houses that would qualify as tiny homes based on size and definition. We have never prohibited them from being permitted. We just permit them as single-family dwellings and they're inspected into compliance. As far as the density issue and those sorts of things, we would have to look at how we wanted to handle that in the more rural areas because there is a development trade-off.
If it's not in the military protection, I could see you should be able to put them on smaller lots.
Like, like I said, not a problem with that, but we do need to develop standards for that and our code doesn't currently have any. So within the confines of our current code, it is treated as a single-family dwelling. And outside of a single-family dwelling with an accessory apartment, we only allow one dwelling per parcel of land.
Mr. Chairman, just to follow up on what the councilman from Dazzle has said, there are constituents in my district who would like to be able to place more than one home on one lot, particularly those folks who have family members that may be returning from out of state to retire and they all want to be there together. But as it stands now, it's just one house. Yeah, one acre. So a lot of my folks, yeah, so a lot of my folks would like to see that expanded to two. So that's something that we can-
Address it.
That we can begin addressing.
We address that.
We've got to deal with septic.
Yeah, yeah.
The tiny houses, tiny houses probably would have an issue.
On soul.
Is it possible to develop that and bring that forward?
It'll take, it would take some time, but it could be done. It wouldn't be something I could come back with next month.
No.
I can definitely put it on the list to be addressed sooner rather than later, but it, it wouldn't be a quick fix because there's a lot of things that we would need to look at related to emergency access, what kind of property they're putting on. A lot of the acreage in the more rural parts of the county where families want to build these enclaves aren't necessarily on public roads. So it's a lot of the conversation that's been happening over the last several months that we need to carefully weigh how we're going to manage all of that and what the appropriate number of structures are, whether it's a tiny house or a true single-family detached home, whether it's a manufactured home or a site-built structure. Need to talk to D-HAC to understand what kind of septic systems they would expect these units to have, whether it could be one large shared unit or it has to be multiple septic tanks. There's all, a lot of things that have to be weighed out.
And you've got to look at every zoning district, too.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve first reading with, appreciate the thorough explanation with the cabinet. She can give us the Cliff Notes at second reading, and I saw it with council.
How, how much of a Cliff's note?
Well, nothing's changed since then.
Unless there's changes, yeah.
Unless there's changes.
Yeah.
That, the changes that were asked for, the removal of the two-bedroom minimum.
You, okay. We can make that, we can make that change.
That's my motion first.
Want to add to your motion that we go ahead and ask her to look into the-
Yeah, I'll go ahead and ask her to go ahead and start the process. I know it's going to be lengthy, but whenever you get a chance in your spare time.
I'll get right on that.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just to put a face on an issue for you. Andrea Loney has her aunt on the property. Her daughter just retired as a teacher from out of state. She now wants to build on the property and then she has a brother. But it's all family property and it's something that more and more residents, my constituents are talking to me about. So it's certainly something we ought to explore.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
First reading with those exceptions is passed. Ordinance 251033.
There have been no changes since second reading.
Who's approve a third reading?
We have a motion and a second to approve third reading of ordinance number 251033. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Ordinance number 251034, Mr. Bryan.
True.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, ordinance 251034 is an ordinance to approve documents called the Procedures and Policies for Sumter County Roads, which is dated September 2025. Looks like this. For the benefit of the public, this matter was discussed in the Public Works Committee earlier. It's a 25-page document. There was another document produced in 2007. What this document does is delete from pages anything having to do with planning. So this document now focuses on the execution or the construction of roads. And incorporated in this new document is the Sumter County Private Road Acceptance Procedures for Emergency Access Purposes. This is something that county council has been working on for some time and it's going to be added to this document here. I'll be glad to take any questions from members of council.
Any questions? Mr. Pleasure, Council?
Over. Second read.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 251034. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Ordinance number 251034 passes. Committee reports, Public Works.
Public Works met today and we had a short meeting. Councilman Washington, I'm going to let you, if you want to speak on where we're at. I think probably it'll be in October, people can start submitting. Will you go ahead and speak on it?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Obviously, more progress made today. You just heard second reading. Two weeks from now, you'll have third reading, which will be the final reading. Subsequent to third reading, staff will really hone in, putting the specifics in place, which would create the requirements for residents who live on a private road to be considered. Obviously, as I've said earlier on a number of occasions, it would require permission for every person on that road who owns property, which would be a piece of that road. All of those residents would have to agree that the road is in disrepair and they would also have to agree to permit the county to take control of that portion, which would essentially be the road. So there'll be some guidelines coming down. I do want to commit, to commend staff. They've put in a lot of work on this. We should remember that the process that has been in place has been in place for 35 years. So this has been a long time coming. And again, I want to congratulate my colleagues for agreeing to take this issue on. As it was explained to them, they realized that it was a problem for residents in our county and they agreed to work on it. And here we are. Second reading is passed and third reading will be in two weeks. And at that point, we'll be able to see some additional movement. So thank you all, the public, for bringing this issue to our attention and making sure we stay after it. And thanks to my colleagues as well. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Washington and Mr. Bay. Public, I'm sorry, we had a special meeting of county council. We went into executive session to have a legal briefing. We did not take any action. It was just to receive some information from our attorney. Come now to reports from county council members on any other meetings, trainings, and our conferences. Hearing none, Mr. Mixon, county administrators report.
No report received, Mr. Sir. Thank you.
Come now to the public comment portion of our agenda. Citizens may speak for up to three minutes. This is time for comments only. Questions will be answered afterwards. We did discuss, and we now have a form that the clerk has placed in this basket. If any member of the public wishes to have formal feedback concerning a question, please fill out this form and give it to our clerk, Ms. Sterling Mitchum, and you will get a response in writing or however you prefer based on what you put on this form. So I declare the public comment portion now open. Anyone wishing to speak to council, please proceed to the podium and state your name for the record.
Mr. Chairman, as they come, I'd like to make a comment on the, the document used for folks to submit questions. This document was developed by staff. I think it is a really good document because a lot of times constituents have questions that they bring before council publicly, but there's no written trail. Sometimes there's some confusion along the way. Now we have the ability to see your questions. Staff has the ability to research your question and then come back with a written response if you would like and/or a verbal response. So this was done to make things easier for constituents. So I just wanted to thank staff for the work they've done on this and council for its indulgence and understanding that it was necessary. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone wishing to speak to council?
Good evening, councilmen. If this is, how shall I say? Not allowed. My name is Sarah Williams. If this is not allowed, I'm starting here. I'm trying to gather myself. I'm not going to say anything to try to contaminate evidence that is being collected, but I'm here to speak on the behalf of the young lady that was murdered over the weekend. She is my son's wife, niece, which is the brother, the sister to the brother that was murdered in September of last year. I too have lost a child a few years ago. This gold pendant that I'm wearing is not for beautification. Some of you that have served in the military, I'm a Gold Star Mom. I've had two of my four children served in the military. My oldest is retired Air Force. I'm speaking on the behalf of this mother and this crime that's going on in our county and our city where these young people are using, losing their lives for no reasons. When I got this message Sunday, I got it in a text. And I was sitting in my bedroom where I just came from a baby ordination dedication that morning. And I had to call my son to make sure it was true. After he told me it was, I was in my house literally screaming. My husband couldn't console me. My baby girl was there with us, which is her birthday today. She just texts me getting out of court in Columbia where she works. I lost it. This young mother, she is 38 years old. She's getting ready to bury her second child. I have not laid eyes on her nor her mother yet. When military brought the message to me about my son, her mother, ma'am, please. Her mother grabbed my hand in the yard that Sunday afternoon. It's a time I will never forget. And when military asks for Mr. and Ms. Williams, my Air Force retiree daughter, she said, Mama, this is it. I did not want to believe what Lieutenant Moore came and knocked on my door and told me and my husband that morning. I don't know what and where we need to start to stop all this killing in Sumter City and the county. Yes, I will be to the city meeting next week as well. I own property in the city and the county because many ask, why is she always at the county meetings? I own property in the city and the county. I do live in the city limits, but I do own property in the county that I pay taxes on. That's why I go to these meetings. Right here as I stand today, haven't eaten, haven't slept much since I got this message. But I do know my husband and I need to lay our eyes on this young lady. I don't know what state or frame of mind she's in because she's about to bury her second child within one year to gun violence. I don't know about any of you, but if you've had to see your child in a casket or coming in on an airplane on a casket, I don't want to imagine this mother's feeling right now. But what I want to happen is to see some task force get in effect in the county and the city to stop it. If it is gangs, we need to get them out. There's too many young people losing their lives for no reason. She was an innocent bystander and there was an infant also that skipped the bullets. Her seven, eight-month-old baby boy skipped a few of those bullets because dad was taking him inside. I assume if the baby was in the car, the baby and dad would be dead too. That's all.
Sorry for your loss, Ms. Williams. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Frances Bennett. I live at 6720 Glover's Lane in Rimbert. And I want to thank each of you. I know you've had a long day. You've had a lot of work to try and get us to this point. Mr. Washington, I am in your district. And I say thank you very much because no one knows what we go through, just leaving your house each day on these county roads, the private roads. I don't understand how we ever got to be a private road, to tell you the truth. Because none of us asked for that. I remember when there was a road scraper would come and take care of the roads for you. And our taxes haven't stopped coming. But I'm thankful to you for what you have done and I pray that we will get results because it's really hard. It's disheartening when I have to leave home. My husband, as I've said before, he has had one leg removed. He has on dialysis three times a week, which is a four-hour process each day. And I take him there and that's one trip out. And I come back home because I'm not going to stay out for four hours waiting for him to get through. And then I go back out and I pick him up and we come back home. So over the course of one week, that's 12 trips down this road. So you can imagine what it's doing to my truck, my car. And all I'm asking for is help. I appreciate the fact that you're going to be looking at the different things, ambulance, really, if I'm in a rush to try and get my husband to medical assistance or ambulance trying to get through, they can't. I would tear up the car trying to get out of there fast trying to get him there, which I know I would probably try and do. So I want to say thank you to each of you for what you have done, but please, let's take it all the way because this is bad. We all would love to be able to say we live right near a regular road, but that's impossible. A lot of, we are in the rural. And when you're in the rural area, you have to go off the main road and probably go down about a quarter of a mile, a half a mile, some people might have to go a mile to get to their homes. I just want to say thank you and continue doing the work for the people. Thank you.
And Mrs. Steve.
Good afternoon. My name is Brenda Robeson and I live at 460 Miss AV Lane, Sumter, South Carolina. My question is, I live on a rural dirt road. Really, I live, my road is right beside the prison and that road is paved. I heard Councilman Washington said that it has to be anonymous, that every landowner has to sign off on getting the road fixed. And to me, I understand that, but there are, we got a hole out, to be honest. That's why I'm here. The only, the young lady that owns majority of the land where we at, she, she won't sign the petition for the road, but every other owner have signed. So we, we're going to be stuck and that's, and that's not fair. It's not fair. You got 10 landowners and 11 won't sign. So then we suffer with a bad road. So I would need to look at that. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Param Cain, C-A-I-N. Live on Camp Branch Road in Sumter. Yes, my road was in the news. And I apologize my back is to you all, but that's, I don't like that. I wish I had talked to the first lovely lady who was speaking, but I too am going to go to the city council meeting, the next one, and I'll continue coming to the county meeting. The reason I'm here is because I know my road has been in the, in the news and our home was right in the middle, well, almost in the middle. Yes, there was a deceased person Saturday night, just this past Saturday. I did not know about it until I read in the, read it on the news on Sunday. However, that night at 11:45, I heard the gunshots. There were two, and I'm going to talk to a deputy after the meeting. There were two rounds. One was maybe 10 shots, then there was a, then there was a brief quiet moment, then probably 10 more. And then I, you know, I thought about it and said, well, that was odd because I have a list here that I want to share. On June 19th, 11:15, there was one shot, then five, then one. On June 22nd, at 11 or so, there were eight shots, rapid succession. On July 3rd, at midnight, many shots sounded like in the woods. I write notes. And then on the 14th, there were five shots. On the 21st, August 21st, there were maybe three shots. And then there was this past Saturday night. I'm a retired teacher, so I keep notes. I've got to have notes. So that's what we, that's, you know, we're out in the country. I know rapid gunfire. My husband served with the U.S. Military for 26 years. We were there at the invasion of Panama, so I am fully aware of AR-15 gunshots. I'm fully aware. I'm just, I'm just, it's really upsetting. There are about 18 families on our road. It used to be a dirt road, now it's a paved road. And it's just disheartening that this young woman, I did not know, I knew she had a child, I did not know the child was there. And then also that her brother passed away a year ago here in Sumter. They don't, they're not from here, they're from Hampton, Georgia. But anyway, I don't think it made, maybe it made the news, I'm not sure, but on Sunday around 1 o'clock, 1:15, there was another shooting at the other end of our road, at Camp Branch in Plowden Mill. And supposedly the person had to be medevaced, he was shot and so forth. The deputies came and they were, may I continue? Is that okay? The deputies came and put down the guns, put down the evidence markers for the gun, for the bullets in the road. So here we are, the 18 families, there's a killing at one end and then there's a shooting at the other end. Were they connected? We don't know. I've heard nothing about the second, the second incident, but I don't know what the answer is. I think probably a task force if the community gets together. Certainly, I guess my, my road needs to have a neighborhood watch to keep up with what's going on. I know people hunt on our road. These are not people hunting deer. I can assure you of that. But I think it is a concern. It's a concern for the county and for the city. And I just hope we hear from, hear from, from you all soon and from the city and let's keep that family in our prayers and for the gentleman who was also shot on Sunday. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Cain.
My name is Ethel Durant. I stay on, I live on 20, my name is Ethel Durant. I live on 2460 Camden Road. I have too many wrecks in my yard late at night, drunk people, young. And I, for February up until now, I had six wrecks in my, turned over in my yard. If it's not in my yard, it'll cross the street or on the side of my bedroom. Last, week before last, I had a truck turn over and it's right in my, from my bedroom. I can step on my porch into his trunk, the trunk of his truck and the, and the washing machine right in my yard. I hadn't been here before and complained about that. Baker, Mr. Baker, I've, I've spoke to you before. The dirt road on Fort Bridges Road there is terrible. Buses come down that road and dark on that, out on that side there. I'm tired, I'm afraid to even go to bed at night. In March, when my husband was in the nursing home, a car with a bunch of men, young men, turn over in my yard, flip, 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 and it's on the other side of my tree. I just got into bed, 2 o'clock in the morning. They out there cutting up, got guns and everything. I run, thank God, my son was there that night with me and he ran outside and see what was going on and he just started cursing and carrying on. He was trying to get away. But I ran on that corner, even though when I come out my driveway right now, I can't even see coming around the curve on the O-521. And it's been like that and I hadn't been there 32 years. It's getting worse. Cars coming around there. I had two wrecks last week. One guy following another car too close, raining that morning. Young, two young people got, not killed, but got hurt. Amalamb service, and I have pictures, Amalamb service out there, the fire department and everything. It is, I don't know what to do. Now y'all, we need, y'all need to do something with that curve and that road. It is bad. I don't let my grandkids go. I am scared to come out of my road. I go down Fort Bridges Road to get on the, on Sumter-Sumter Highway to come out of my yard, out of my, out of my yard, this Sumter-Sumter Highway to go downtown. I am afraid to arrive out of my own driveway to go downtown on the O-521. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Durant. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman. Joe Perry for Sumter County Government. Just wanted to introduce to you, if you haven't met her yet, Ms. Rhiannon O'Barry from the Sumter Items, newest reporter covering county council. She replaces Ms. Deidra Kern Weaver, who's with the Post and Courier now. So we wish her well. Thank you.
Seeing no one else? Public comments closed?
Good evening. My name is Vivian Chestnut and I live at 5765 Opalane on Weshville, the outskirts of Weshville. It's off of Patriot Highway area. And I was talking about the one acre lot that is with only one drail there for a house. But I would like for it to be, trying to get it divided up to be like in two, at least two houses can be there. You know, it might be, can be more than that too, but I would prefer to, you know, just to be two if it possible with that. I know you have to go through a whole lot of different things to get that, like separate tanks and water lines and different other things like that. But anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chestnut.
Second his motion.
Here we have a motion, motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye. We adjourn. Thank you everyone for coming.